Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Monday, May 13th, 2024 meeting of the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners. Ms. Cuthbertson is our acting township manager this evening. Amy, would you call the role?
Commissioner Gondak.
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Hi. Before we move on, just a quick announcement. Our board met in executive session immediately prior to this meeting and to discuss matters relating to litigation. Okay, the first thing is a township manager's appointment. So Ms. Cuthbertson, we are considering an appointment for Director of Community Development?
Yes, and on behalf of myself and township manager Dave Berman, we are thrilled to introduce Jamie Jelosian as Director of Community Development for Havreford Township. Jamie comes to us with a master's in community planning from Auburn University and a bachelor's in historic preservation and community planning from the College of Charleston. Jamie's experience spans various roles and responsibilities across different levels of government and the private sector. Early in her career, Jamie served as a preservation planning intern with the Alabama Historical Commission. Her career led to roles of increasing responsibility and impact with the Chester County Planning Commission, West Ocean Township, and Middletown Township. Jamie has worked both as a planner and as a municipal zoning officer. In addition, Jamie has earned professional certification with the American Institute of Certified Planners, a public entity leadership certification from Penn State Abington, and a variety of awards for planning excellence. Jamie also resides in the Bryn Mawr section of Havreford Township. Jamie will oversee code enforcement, planning, zoning, and community development functions, and we welcome Jamie to Havreford Township.[161.19][161.19](Applause). One bit of formality, we'll ask the board to officially ratify this appointment.
Before us is a motion to approve the township manager's appointment of Ms. Jelosian as Director of Community Development for Havreford Township. Ms. Cuthbertson, will you call the role?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Welcome Director Jelosian. The next, oh, sorry. The next item on our agenda are several proclamations, beginning with proclamation heralding the Sacred Heart Girls Basketball Team. Commissioner Forstie Grub?
Commissioner Gondak.
Oh, Commissioner Gondak, please.
I think in this one. Whereas the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the outstanding achievements of our local youth, and whereas the Sacred Heart Girls Basketball Team has achieved remarkable success, making history with their exceptional performance throughout the season, and whereas this dedicated group of athletes accomplished numerous firsts in Sacred Heart history, including winning the prestigious St. Helena's Tournament, securing victory in the Sacred Heart Christmas Tournament for three consecutive years, and remaining undefeated in Region 32 play, and whereas this hardworking team of nine players went on to capture the championship of Region 32 and earned the title of Archdiocese and Champions, marking another significant milestone in the Sacred Heart Schools basketball program, and whereas their determination and teamwork led this girls' basketball team to become the first ever state champions in Sacred Heart Schools' history in any sport after an impressive performance in the PA State Championship Tournament, and whereas the Sacred Heart Girls Basketball Team exemplifies the spirit of sportsmanship, dedication, and excellence, serving as role models for our community's youth. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Havreford in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, that we extend our heartfelt congratulations and deepest admiration to the Sacred Heart Girls Basketball Team coaches Eric Ebers, Dave DeTrolio, Michelle Ebers, and Ally Dregger, and teammates Caleb Brady, Addie DeTrolio, Kayla Ebers, Kelsey Ebers, Ava Fafaza, Tara Flynn, Kira Hanson, Kaylee Hart, and Sammy Hipper, for their extraordinary achievements and for bringing pride and joy to our community. Proclaim this 13th day of May, 2024, Township of Havreford, by C. Lawrence Holmes, President.[372.56][372.56](Applause).
Why don't we gather the team and the coaches in front for a picture? Thank you, Commissioner Gondak. Our next proclamation relates to ALS awareness. Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, thank you, and bear with me because I'm sure there'll be some stuttering here, so. So, or whereas ALS is known by many as AluGeric's disease, is a progressive fatal, well, a neurodegenerative disease that affects the voluntary muscles in a person's body so that the person's brain or connection with the muscle slowly taking away their ability to walk, talk, eat, and vent, vent, vently breathe. And whereas ALS is the most common neuromuscular disease in the world, and each year an estimated 5,000 new people in the U.S. are diagnosed, and as many as 1,000 Pennsylvanians are currently living with ALS, and whereas every 90 minutes, some, someone is diagnosed with ALS and some, someone passes away from ALS, and whereas an average patient diagnosed with ALS will only survive two to five years from the time of the diagnosis, and whereas ALS has no, like, no cure, and whereas we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the ICE Challenge through a renewed or commitment to galvanize public awareness and support funding leading to its next event in investments in ALS research, and whereas our commitment to accelerate the pace of discovery remains unweight, fueled by the hope that one day ALS will be a livable disease for everyone and everywhere until we can cure it, and whereas ALS Awareness Month increases the public's awareness of people with ALS's dire circumstances and acknowledges the terrible impact the disease has, not only on that person but on his or her family and the community, and recognizes the research done to eradicate this disease. Now for, or now therefore be it resolved that the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners declares the month of May as ALS Awareness Month, and encourage us all to join in supporting ALS research while advocating for increased funding. Proclaim this 13th day of May, Township of Havreford.[741.12][741.12](Applause).
And next on our agenda, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Next on our agenda is a proclamation proclaiming National Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day. And Commissioner Forstie Grub?
Whereas the police officers of Havreford Township have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of Havreford Township, regardless of the peril or danger to themselves, and whereas these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of the residents of Havreford Township, and whereas these men and women, by their patriotic service and dedicated efforts, have earned the gratitude of the residents of Havreford Township, now therefore be it proclaimed the Commissioners of Havreford Township calls upon its residents to observe the week of May 12th to the 18th, 2024 as Police Week. We had further proclaimed that the Commissioners of Havreford Township calls upon the community to observe May 15th, 2024 as National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service to their community, proclaim this 13th day of May, 2024.[833.00][833.00](Applause).
I now invite the chief and the deputy chief up before the board for our township to conduct what has become a very special and event for us, which is the annual Police Department Officer Recognization.
Pardon our backs, Commissioners. Before we get started tonight, since the Memorial Day is coming up on May the 15th, I'd like to take a moment to remember Officer Norin Bar and Sergeant Kevin Radding, who died in line of duty. If you'd take a moment of silence for both of us, please. Before I start, we have a list of officers who are standing behind us who will receive commendations tonight for various acts of heroism, commendation. But I just want to say for myself, to everyone here, and to anybody who's listening and watching, I am proud to say that I'm honored to work with these officers for the best police department in Delaware County, and I truly mean that. Every one of these officers here puts their life on the line every day, and when you hear some of the statements and commendations they get tonight, you'll understand where we're coming from. So with that, with that, we'll get started. So commendation of merit. On Thursday, October 26th, 2023, at 11:05 hours, Havreford Township Police responded to the Sandtander Bank at 116 Township Line for report of a bank robbery in progress. Delcom, who's our dispatch center, advised that Sandtander Bank Corporate Security was watching the robbery take place in real time from security cameras inside the bank. The actor describes the male approximately 50, 60 years of age, wearing a gray skull cap, black shirt, and black shoes, approached a teller and told him that this was a robber and requested $50 and $20 bills. Teller handed over $379 to the suspect, and he fled the bank and entered a gray Nissan sedan and fled towards Township Line. Officer Thomas McDermott was close by and arrived on location with a minute of being dispatched. A good Samaritan who witnessed the robbery take place observed Officer McDermott and pointed out the gray Nissan, which was exiting the parking lot of the shopping center and traveling south on Township Line. Officer McDermott quickly positioned his patrol vehicle behind the Nissan and conducted a vehicle investigation, allowing no opportunity for the vehicle to flee the area. Officer Sean McLaughlin then arrived on scene and positioned his patrol car in front of the suspect vehicle, leaving no route for escape. Officer McDermott took a tactically advantaged position on the driver's side of the Nissan, began giving verbal commands as Officer McLaughlin covered him on the passenger side of the suspect vehicle. Sergeant Michael Kenny, Officer Brian McDonald, and Officer Christopher Viola arrived on the scene and assisted Officer McDermott as he was ordering the robbery suspect and driver to exit the vehicle. While Sergeant Zambon arrived and provided support through Officer McLaughlin and securing the passenger, who was holding a large amount of cash in her hands. The driver, now known as Glenn Mofeski, exited the vehicle, was swiftly taken into custody by Officers McDonald and Viola. Detective Fuller arrived at the Sandtander Bank and began to interview witnesses and gather evidence. Detective Fuller also interviewed the victim teller and transported him to the scene of the vehicle stop where he did positively identify the suspect. Detective Fuller later went to Bryn Mawr Hospital, where the suspect was being held, and attained a full confession to the robbery. Ultimately, Detective Fuller was the arresting officer of the suspect in charge with robbery of the financial institution and theft of receiving stolen property. While providing value service, police services, Officer Thomas McDermott, Sean McLaughlin, Brian McDonald, Christopher Viola, Sergeant Michael Kenny, Stephen Zambon, and Detective Joe Fuller acted intelligently and with perseverance in order to quickly locate and apprehend a bank robbery suspect while he was attempting to flee the area. The exceptional police work was led to the arrest of a dangerous felon. For this outstanding accomplishment, the officers named above are being awarded the commendation of merit. Officers, please come forward.[1087.52][1087.52](Applause). I'm just going to hand these out.
Congratulations, congratulations.
This commendation is awarded to an officer who performs a lifesaving act under extraordinary circumstances. On Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, at 16:14 hours, Havreford Township responded to 200 block or 200 block eastbound on West Chester Pike for a reported medical emergency. Reporting party and the passenger of the black Ford F-150, Stephen Jacobs, was the driver victim. He was unconscious. The vehicle was pulled off to the side of West Chester Pike. They further advised the driver was not breathing and the passenger was unable to perform CPR. Officer Williams arrived on location within one minute of being dispatched and made contact with the passenger, and he advised Officer Williams as his coworker, a 39-year-old male was driving home from work, when he observed him awkwardly throw his phone, lose consciousness. Jacobs stayed, quickly leaned across the console of the vehicle, applied the brakes with his left hand, and steered the vehicle towards the right side of roadway. Officer Williams then, with the help of Jacobs, lifted the victim out of the driver's seat of the truck and placed him onto the roadway of West Chester Pike. He appeared to be in full cardiac arrest and was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer McLaughlin, Corey Watkins, Matt Hoffman also arrived on location to assist, and Officer Thomas McDermott shut down eastbound West Chester Pike so lifesaving measures could be performed. Using his personal medical shears, Officer Williams cut his shirt off and ordered better assessed the chest area so CPR could begin. Officers Watkins began performing chest compressions while Officer McLaughlin prepared and fixed the AED to his chest. After assessing his condition, AED did administer one critical shock prior to arrival of the medics. Officer Williams, McLaughlin, Hoffman continued lifesaving measures and assisted medics rotating in and out with compressions, while three more AED shocks were administered to the victim during the prolonged efforts. Medics did finally find a pulse and CPR was discontinued. On Monday, June 12th, Sergeant Zambon was contacted by Lankin and spoke to medical staff who were actively treating the victim, advised that he was doing well on his way to recovery. Without question, the response along with the prompt critical lifesaving treatment provided directly to the officers by Officers Williams, McLaughlin, Watkins, and Hoffman, they saved his life. Any delay in officers' actions in all probability led to his death. For their actions, they are being awarded the commendation for lifesaving event.[1270.33][1270.33](Applause).
Congratulations, good job.
This commendation is awarded to an officer who performs a lifesaving act under extraordinary circumstances, whereas the officer took direct, immediate, and positive action to preserve the life of another human being who was in danger of dying. The action taken by the officer did prevent the loss of human life, and the circumstances of the act were such that any delay in providing assistance in all probability would have resulted in the person's death. On Saturday, July 1st, 2023, at approximately 11:02 hours, the Havreford Township Police Department and the Norberth Ambulance were dispatched to 224 Gulf Hills Road for the report of a medical emergency. It was reported the victim was a 67-year-old male who was unconscious and in cardiac arrest. Sergeant Michael Kenny, Officers Thomas McDermott, and Kimberly Huganear responded to the scene. Upon their arrival, Officer McDermott quickly assessed the victim, Howard Polikov, and found he was in cardiac arrest. Officer McDermott removed Mr. Polikov to the floor and began chest compressions. Officer Huganear had brought her vehicle's AED to the residence and attached it to Mr. Polikov. Officer Ricky Williams also responded to the scene, and he spoke with Mr. Polikov's wife in order to obtain information about her husband and order for us and Norberth Ambulance to treat Mr. Polikov. Norberth Ambulance responded to the scene and started lifesaving efforts. Officer McDermott, Sergeant Kenny continued chest compressions until they relieved Norberth Ambulance. Officer Huganear assisted in the ambulance crew with their equipment in order to allow them to treat Mr. Polikov more effectively. Norberth Ambulance determined that a pulse was reestablished from Mr. Polikov, but they had to innovate him and were still able, still breathing for him. Norberth Ambulance transported Mr. Polikov to Bryn Mawr Hospital to continue lifesaving measures. On Monday, July 10th, 2023, Sergeant Kenny received information that Mr. Polikov was in good spirits and joking with staff at Bryn Mawr Hospital. The officers involved in this incident took direct and immediate positive action to preserve the life of another human being who was in danger of dying. Through their actions, these officers did prevent the loss of human life, and any delay in their providing assistance may have resulted in the person's death. Officer Thomas McDermott, Kimberly Huganear, Ricky Williams, and Sergeant Michael Kenny conducted themselves in a highly professional manner and immediately rendered aid to a subject who needed immediate assistance to preserve his life. For their actions, they are hereby awarded this commendation for lifesaving event.[1432.01][1432.01](Applause).
On Saturday, August 13th, 2023, at approximately 13:01 hours, Delcom Dispatch put out a radio call for a person down in a pool at 309 Ellis Road. While units were responding, Dispatch upgraded the call to a possible drowning. Upon arriving in an emergency manner, Sergeant Coleman and Officers Howard and Patterson were first on scene and were directed by family members that their relative, later identified as Vance Collins, was in the pool in the back of the house and not moving. As the officers entered the backyard, they observed the male laying at the bottom of the deep end of the pool. As the officers started moving towards the side of the pool closest to the male, they began taking their police gear off. Officer Howard entered the pool as Sergeant Coleman and Officer Patterson were on the edge of the pool. Officer Howard was able to swim to the bottom and retrieve the subject and brought him up to the edge of the pool, where Sergeant Coleman and Officer Patterson were able to pull the male onto the pool deck. At that time, lifesaving measures were immediately administered, with CPR being given by both Sergeant Coleman and Officer Patterson. While this was happening, Officers Escher, Jay Jones, A. Jones, and Murtha began to arrive on scene as well as Norberth Ambulance. Medical personnel took over CPR while officers stood by to assist. While still on location, a pulse was retrieved from Mr. Collins, who was then transported to Bryn Mawr Hospital by Norberth Ambulance for further evaluation. Sergeant Brian Coleman, Officers John Escher, Lawrence Howard, Andrew Jones, James Jones, Thomas Murtha, and Anthony Patterson conducted themselves in a highly professional manner and immediately rendered aid to a subject who needed immediate assistance. For their actions, they are hereby awarded this official commendation for a lifesaving
On Sunday, December 10th, 2023, at 1900 hours, Officer Lincoln and Officer Todd were dispatched to respond to Riccardi Brothers at 2340 Half Row for a burglary alarm. On arrival, they discovered front door was unsecured, and officers quickly removed to clear the building. While clearing the building, appeared to be found a burglary, as officers observed items displaced from the counter, footprints by the registers. Officers on scene were aware of a recent string of burglaries along Havreford Road, and once the building was cleared, they began to check the area for the suspect, who was believed to use the 100 line for transportations. Officers began to check the Wynwood Road Station. While doing so, Sergeant Murray and Officer Todd observed a male subject matching the description of the suspect in the recent burglaries. Officer Todd was in the parking lot as the male began to walk away from the platform. At this time, the subject was ordered to stop, and he fled on foot towards Eagle Road with Officer Todd in close pursuit. As the subject reached the top of the steps, he dropped the firearm and turned to face Officer Todd and bent down to pick it back up. Officer Todd, seeing the firearm drew down on the suspect and continued to give commands, the suspect was noncompliant, continued to flee towards Arlington Road and jumped down in a bank bin towards Cobb's Creek. At that time, Sergeant Reynolds, Officer Dansky, and Officer Howard now on location and given updated flash information. Sergeant Reynolds and Officer Howard entered the backyard of Dogwood Circle, able to locate the subject in the swamp creek underneath Eagle Road. The subject continued to flee and move upstream under the bridge. Officers continued to give commands as the subject exited the creek and moved towards the wooded area, towards the tracks. Officer Todd ran towards the head nut where he was able to observe the suspect come out of the wooded area and walk towards the rear of the head nut. Sergeant Murray and Officer Todd entered the track area and began checking. At this time, Officer Todd observed him hiding in the alcove in the rear of the building along the track area. Officers held the suspect to gunpoint and found a rival backup. He was taken into custody without innocent Upper Darby police with Officer Brennan's assistance and transported the subject back to headquarters. He was positively identified, who was wanted by several departments for burglaries and a suspect of several other burglaries in town. A search and incident arrest was conducted, and a Ford vehicle key was seen as evidence. That key eventually tied back to an open burglary investigation, once he was already a suspect. The following day, they were able to locate the firearm and a crowbar along the banks of Cobb Creek where he observed fleeing. During the incident, officers were not only combating a suspect who was helping on escape but also in adverse weather conditions, which made the pursuit more difficult. And... but also in adverse weather conditions, which made the pursuit more difficult and dangerous. All officers displayed 402 dogged resolve to apprehend the armed serial burglar and did so without any serious injury to the officers or the suspect. Additionally, although not involved in pursuit of the suspect, Officer Lincoln provided invaluable assistance when he hailed the crime scene at 2340 Half Row. Officer Lincoln called for additional K-9 units and seppeth notified to shut down the train during the rain while officers were operating in the area. Assistance was unbelievable, important to the safety apprehension of the suspect while other officers are otherwise engaged with the armed suspect. Because they worked together as a unit displaying professionalism, good police instincts, they were able to make an arrest of a serial burglar. For these reasons, the officers listed are being awarded Distinguished Unit Commendations: Sergeant Matt Murray, Sergeant Jane Reynolds, Officers Joseph and Danzke, Officer Michael Brennan, Officer Larry Howard, Officer Doug Linker, and Officer Lawrence Todd.
Before I read this one, can I have Chief Deal come up with me, please? Chief Deal is the chief of the Delaware County Park Police. So we're going to award a Commendation of Merit tonight. On Sunday, October 8th, 2023, officers were dispatched at 1235 West Chester Pike for maternity. Sergeant McCraine, Officer Howard located the mother, Jacqueline Deal, his daughter, in the rear of the business. Deal was in town, Deal was in the passenger seat of her vehicle in active labor. Officer Howard took immediate action as the baby began to crown. While waiting for medics to arrive, Officer Howard then began to coach Deal through the contractions and delivered the healthy baby, Mason Deal. During the birth, Officer Howard exuded confidence in his abilities as a police officer to deliver the child without any complications. Officer Howard kept the mother calm during this extremely stressful time. Deal or son returned to the medics upon their arrival. For his outstanding accomplishment, Officer Howard is awarded the Commendation of Merit.
And our last one is the Haverford Township Police Department, 2023 Officer of the Year. Officer Larry Howard is described by his supervisors as quick to handle any call or back up any officer that needs it. Officer Howard often answers calls prior to the start of the shift, and he is mindful of the officers he is relieving. He is a member of the department SWAT team, firearms instructor, and officer in charge. Officer Howard was nominated for Commendation on three separate incidents in 2023. He received a unit commendation for a suspect that was arrested, which cleared a burglar on Brookline Boulevard, as well as nine thefts from vehicles in that area. The second incident where Officer Howard was nominated for lifesaving award, not only by this department, but also nominated and received an FOP award, it was a radio call for a person down at the pool at the residence on Ellis Road. Officer Howard was one of the first officers on the scene and immediately jumped in the pool and pulled the subject to the side of the deck where other officers were able to pull the victim up and begin CPR. And upon the arrival of medical personnel and transport to the hospital, where the victim did sustain a pulse. The third incident, which occurred on October 8th, 2023, where a radio call was received for a woman in labor in the vehicle behind the Smoothie King at 1100 Block of West Chester Pike, Officer Howard was the first arriving officer and delivered a healthy baby boy. Officer Howard was nominated by this department for a Commendation of that Incident, was also nominated and received an award by the FOP, which is a conjunction of the drowning victim. In 2023, Officer Howard ranked first in the following categories: First in incidents 989, First in for backups 573, First in for footbeats 769. Officer Howard was described as a Swiss Army knife because of his attributes and value he brings to each shift to the department. For his exceptional police work, dedication to duty, leadership, and professionalism, Officer Larry Howard is Haverford Township, Haverford Township Police Department Officer of the Year.
One last thing, Commissioners, you've listened to many lifesaving awards given here tonight. I'll switch sides. Without your support of the Police Department to allow us to train and buy the equipment needed, we wouldn't be having this Commendation for the people we have saved and the jobs these officers have done. So it's not just the Police Department, it's with the help of our elected officials to allow us to be the best Police Department in Delaware County. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for that. Thank you for those comments. I can assure you, while we appreciate greatly your description of us as a partnership, I really do think we as a board have come out ahead in this trade with your outstanding department and your outstanding leadership. Thank you. We'll take a moment, and we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which will be Citizens Forum. Thank you for everyone's attention. We now will move on to the Citizens Forum. We have four people who have signed up this evening to speak in the Citizens Forum, registered speakers. Our first speaker will be a member of the Board of Haverford Little League.
Good evening. Jay Field, 144 Fawn Lane. I first want to thank all the Board of Commissioners for their support to our league during the past five years while I've served as President of HTLL. I also want to thank Brian Barrett, who's here tonight, and Eileen Matola for all their help with various needs and massive scheduling coordination. Thank you very much. The lights are the talk of many leagues and people within our own community. Thank you again for your financial support. I encourage you to come to a night game and see the atmosphere and sense of community that we are all so lucky to have. We are also here tonight to thank you and express the gratitude for our partnership that we share for the HTLL families and surrounding community with you, the Haverford Township. It is for the families of HTL, I'm sorry, it is for this that we would like to discuss tonight, a few minutes, the word partnership. We are the oldest and only sanctioned Little League in the township and have been a chartered organization since 1959. Being a Little League organization has its own set of standards that we need to comply with for continued participation each year: yearly fees, players and coaches insurance, field standards, and of course, baseball protocol and Little League rules to which we abide by for our league. We take seriously that word partnership and have committed approximately $40,000 a year on upgrades, general maintenance of the property, and mowing of the fields weekly. Myself and Vince Strondi have mowed the grass for the last 20 years, weekly, along with providing guidance on field work to keep our fields the nicest baseball fields in Haverford Township. Nothing against the other leagues. We have provided countless hours of our fields and volunteering time and including numerous hours of coaching. That's partnership. We know the cost to assume of that type of maintenance and therefore build it into our fundraising and general operational costs each year. We assume the responsibilities and cost of equipment repair, paying the light bill, and maintenance of the irrigation system, which keeps our grass healthy. We are continually fighting vandalism at the fields and have recently invested thousands of dollars in lighting and security measures to protect our investments for the township and our families. We want to thank the township and the pool for working together on a two-year agreement which allows us to use their lot. We have been extremely grateful to the pool for their willingness to allow us to park there since the early 1960s. Some of our own founding fathers helped to start the pool, which has had a partnership since the beginning. We have been growing the last five years, and we are offering baseball programs throughout the entire year. This is a good thing for HTLL families and the entire township. Canceling opening day this year was a tough decision, and to our records is only the second time in our history. We want to allow for as much parking on our side while being as safe as possible. Therefore, we have created an action plan for the league and hopeful cooperation and consideration to the township. Number one, finish the left field parking lot for which it started back in the beginning of the season. Expanding that footprint would allow for another 15 to 20 cars. Second, widen the road that goes through our complex for safety and logistic issues. It is currently a one-lane road to the upper parking lot. Third, expand the upper lot to allow for another 15 to 20 cars. Completing these three action items will help to alleviate the need and use of the pool parking lot. We are willing as partners to help with the cost for these steps, just as we did contributing to the cost of the lights and other expenses of the year for major improvements. In the last five years, we have invested well over $150,000 in new projects. Now Brian Click, who has served as our player agent for the last three years, will continue with our thoughts.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Click, 2409 Hollis Road. I want to start by reiterating Jay's message of gratitude for your partnership in helping us to procure the lights for our facility and working towards a solution for the parking situation with the pool this year. Your help has been invaluable in providing a safe and productive place for hundreds of youth in our community to gather and have memorable experiences that will last a lifetime, my sons included. So thank you very much for that. Our boarding community wanted to take a moment to share our collective headspace in a public setting, given that there has been a lot of discussion and frustration relating to the safety of Caracung Drive. After the pool's decision to lock their gates this year out of concern for the safety of the retaining wall, this has led to a fluid situation throughout our season, and we feel signals have gotten cross, messaging has been misconstrued at times, and this has led to misunderstandings. We hope that these comments help to clarify our positions in public with transparency. The parking issues we experienced this spring highlighted some real safety concerns that make us feel the best course of action for the long term is to work on plans to maximize parking within the facility while widening the drive in and out of the complex to support cars passing in both directions. We believe that these items, coupled with a planned staggered schedule for future seasons, can make HTLL parking self-sufficient and not a pressure on the pool's private lot moving forward, which would be best for all parties, we believe. In addition, we feel it would make the traffic situation at HTL as safe as possible by keeping our players and parents out of Caracung Drive altogether. The proposed improvements, we believe, would be done in phases, and we would hope to complete them over the period of two years that has been extended by the agreement that has been reached between the pool and the township. We would like to discuss and offer a partnership with the township in helping to support the financial commitment that was agreed upon with the pool to reopen their lot for these next two years. We feel that the burden should not fall exclusively on the taxpayers of the township for the league's parking needs. Additionally, we feel that a potential rental agreement in perpetuity is not a feasible long-term solution for the township or the league to solve the parking situation and the safety issues that arise around Caracung Drive. Phase one of the improvements, as Jay mentioned, would merely be extending the new gravel lot that has been added behind the lower field's fence to accommodate an additional row of cars. This row would be equal in spaces to the row that currently exists parked into the hill. We believe this will add 15 to 20 spots at a minimal cost. Phase two would be removing the original grandstand and widening the driveway into and out of the facility to accommodate cars coming in both directions. This is probably the most imperative from a safety standpoint, as the narrow road used to come in and out of the complex poses a safety concern when you have cars coming in both directions, coupled with children and parents walking up and down that driveway. We honestly feel this would be in the best interest of safety, even if Caracung, the Caracung lot was going to be a long-term solution for overflow parking. Phase three would be the potential expansion of our upper lot to accommodate additional parking. Once the road is widened, to eliminate need for anyone to cross Caracung Drive from the pool parking lot, once the road is widened, this would eliminate the need for anyone to cross the Caracung Drive from the pool parking lot, and given the blind turn that has always posed a risk for an accident involving pedestrian traffic, we feel that this would make everything really safe. To support flow of traffic at the facility moving forward, we are working out the logistics of staggering the time between our games by an additional 30 minutes, much like we did during COVID. Hopefully, this will lead to less congestion moving in and out of the facility on weekends and will be a possible move to make at the start of a new season. Sorry, I lost my notes here. As it would require potential planned Sunday games to facilitate, which we currently do not do because of practices. We are looking for your support in these matters, as we have with other joint ventures, and we would like to explore the feasibility of these measures with the township for planning purposes. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you've done to support the experience of the Haverford Township Little League community to date. We look forward to continued open dialogue and partnership moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next person on our, on the agenda is Chad Brooks.
Good evening. Chad Brooks, Warner Campbell Avenue. I'm here to celebrate Asian American Month at your recommendation, Mr. Holmes. I spoke last year, but, and I hesitate to come back a second time, but I realized through a personal loss that those of us who knew these men firsthand are also fading away, and they need to be recognized. So I'm going to take advantage of that tonight. Immigration has come from all over: India, Southeast Asia, Indonesia, the Philippines. But one of the first countries to send immigrants to the Americas were the Japanese. By 1940, one-third of the residents of the Hawaiian Islands were of Japanese ethnicity. There were Japanese all over America, but especially in California. Unfortunately, in February 1942, President Roosevelt signed a despicable order, Order 9066. The order called for the removal of all persons of Japanese descent, whether alien or citizens from the West Coast. 120,000 men, women, and children were sent to concentration camps in the Western America. 70,000 of them were American citizens. No trial, no hearings, they were just sent to concentration camps. Despite that, 33,000 young men, Nise, Nise stands in Japanese stands for second generation, 33,000 men served in the United States Armed Forces. Last year, I talked about the 442th Regimental Combat Team, whose motto was "Go for Broke." It is remembered as the most decorated unit for its size and length of service in the United States military. But there was another group who received less recognition at the time due to the nature of their service. These were the men who entered the Military Intelligence Service. When war broke out, it is estimated there were only 100 fluent speakers of Japanese in the government service. Think about that, only 100. The Japanese thought their language alone was a code. The Japanese often broadcast in plain language because they didn't think Americans could speak Japanese. They didn't take into account the Nise. The Nise became embedded with American troops. There was some hesitation, you can study that and learn about it, but they served in Burma, in, they acted as cave flushers in Okinawa and Iwo Jima, they were very important in Sapan. By the war's end, Nise linguists had translated an astounding 20 million pages of documents, had interviewed 100,000 prisoners of war. Without a doubt, the intelligence gathered by the MS interpreters shortened the war and saved lives. During the war crimes, Nise translators observed the translations for accuracy and made sure that the correct interpretations were being done. The work of Japanese-Americans extended well beyond World War II and into the Cold War years. During the occupation, Nise served as a bridge between the occupation authorities and civilians. They were very The work of Japanese-Americans extended well beyond World War II and into the Cold War years. During the occupation, Nise served as a bridge between the occupation authorities and civilians. They were very influential in the development of a good civilian police department. The police are highly regarded in Japan because of their service. And when the Japanese Self-Defense Force was reconstituted, again, the Nise were very important. Until the 1970s, all their things were classified, so they never received the recognition they should have. When I arrived in Japan in 1972, I was assigned to a small group euphemistically called Command and Coordination. Part of that group were Russian linguists, who a military officer who visited us told me they knew more about the Red Army and the Soviet Far East than Moscow did. I served with two extraordinary individuals, Roy Shiba and George Yamaguchi. I wish I could give you their whole story, but they were experts in North Korea. Now, if you saw 60 Minutes last night, you know how dangerous that was. The resources and the resources they did and the risks they exposed themselves to, and they had done that for many years. So I just want to shout out and say how important that we recognize the service of individuals. Mark Twain is attributed with saying, "History doesn't repeat itself, but it does rhyme." In 1942, we sent innocent people, because of their ethnicity, to concentration camps. And today, because of their ethnicity, a group in America is being persecuted by individuals simply because of their association with a foreign country. I would hope tonight that we would both celebrate these men and think about the consequences for our present time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those very thoughtful words. Next on our agenda is Mr. Swan, Jake Swan.
This topic is a little more local than the last one. I appreciate being given the opportunity to speak. I live at 522 Oakley Road in Haverford, and I'm here on behalf of the Brinford Civic Association. First of all, I'd like to applaud the Board of Commissioners for two important, or three important recent initiatives. First, the recently passed ordinance related to amusement devices, convenience stores, and tobacco retailers. Second, the recently launched Township-wide Safe Streets for All study. Third, the recent appointment of a full-time Director of Community Development. We're thrilled to have you working for the community. In order to ensure that the... All three of these initiatives demonstrate the Board of Commissioners' commitment to improving the conditions in Haverford Township. We thank you for your leadership. In order to ensure that the priorities reflected in these initiatives are maintained throughout the township, on behalf of the Brinford Civic Association, I urge the Board to request that the township solicitor attend the June zoning hearing board meeting, at which the hearing of case Z2417 will be resumed from last year. This case is related to an application for variances associated with the addition of a convenience store to the Phillips 66 gas station at the corner of Haverford Road and Buck Lane. First, the proposed change to the gas station involves the addition of a convenience store, which would, according to the testimony of the applicant, rely on games of skill for its commercial viability. If the township solicitor were present at the hearing, he could ensure that this proposal would not undermine the policies of the township as set forth in the recently passed ordinance. Second, the addition of a convenience store to this already extremely dangerous intersection, dangerous based both on the testimony of neighbors and a recent PennDOT study, will be hazardous to both motorists and pedestrians. By attending the hearing, the township solicitor would be better able to determine if the location of the convenience store would undermine the township's policy of improving motorist and pedestrian safety, particularly as this is one of the major, more heavily trafficked thoroughfares in the township. Last year, the zoning hearing board granted five of six variances for the convenience store. The Brinford Civic Association and other concerned neighbors, at their own expense, hired a lawyer and appealed the zoning hearing board's decision to the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. The court vacated the zoning hearing board's decision and remanded the case back to the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board. As most of you, perhaps with the exception of Commissioner McCollum, may recall, the Brinford Civic Association had asked the Board last year to join in the appeal, but the Board declined. After our successful appeal to the Court of Common Pleas, the situation has changed because the court has vacated the zoning hearing board decision and remanded the case back to the zoning hearing board. Intervention by the Board is not required. The remand requires that the zoning hearing board reopen and continue the initial hearing. This gives the township solicitor the opportunity to attend the future hearings to ensure that the township's interests and policies are represented. This particular case touches on additional issues which we feel are important to the township, including the de facto rezoning of the property, contrary to zoning code, the increased commercialization of this section of Haverford Road, contrary to the prevailing zoning for the area, the existing comprehensive plan, and the draft 2024/2025, who knows, comprehensive plan. Third, the expansion of a nonconforming use, where the existing nonconforming use is on a parcel already roughly half the size of that required for conforming gas stations. Fourth, the lack of a recommendation by the Planning Commission, which has access to the expertise of its members and advisors. The violation of the township requirement that, under the present configuration, only one use is allowed on the property, that is, it adds a convenience store to the existing gas station. And lastly, the lack of a demonstrated hardship on the part of the applicant, as is required for a variance. It's important to note that not one, but six variances were requested in order to achieve the applicant's goals with this additional use. The presence of the township solicitor at the hearings would guarantee that the interests of the township and its residents are represented and protected. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Finally, our last registered speaker, Ellen Kranek of the Haverford Township School District Educational Foundation.
Thank you. Ellen Kranek, 317 Young Road. I'm the Board President of the Haverford Township School District Education Foundation. We are a nonprofit volunteer organization. Our sole purpose is to raise money to fund educational initiatives throughout the district through grants to teachers, students, and community members. In over 20 years, we've donated over $400,000 and made over 300 grants. On April 27, we completed our 18th Annual Twilight Run 5K and One Mile Elementary Challenge, which is our organization's major fundraiser. This event would not be possible without the support of Haverford Township. I'm here tonight to specifically thank our Commissioners for their personal donations to the Twilight Run, for their participation, and for their efforts to spread the word among constituents and businesses in their wards. We had our second-best turnout ever with 518 runners, and for the first time this year, we held a friendly Commissioners' Cup competition, and I'd like to award the trophy to the Commissioner who had the most registered runners in his or her ward. Congratulations to Ward Seven Commissioner Connor Quinn. Thank you all for supporting a fun community event that benefits our students. Thank you all.
Gee, Connor, what was your time in that run? To be clear, you'd have to time me with a Mayan calendar if I were to run 5K, so congratulations to you and to the foundation for an excellent evening. It was the pleasure of quite a few of us on this board to contribute or participate in the event, and congratulations. We now are at the part of the agenda where people are invited to speak on an agenda item if they would like to do so. There is an opportunity later in the meeting if anyone would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. As I always do, it'll start on my left. Is there anybody on the left side of the room who would like to speak on an agenda item this evening? Start with the first, second, third row, fourth row. Anyone in the fifth row? The final row of the left side? Anybody like to speak?
Is the baseball part of that?
So, baseball is not on the agenda. You could certainly come up later in the meeting when we revisit this and invite your comments then. Anybody here on the right? First row, second row, third or fourth row? Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Board members, Mr. Field, Mr. Glick. Did I get that name right? Thank you for your comments and your suggestions. We will take them under consideration. Mr. Brooks, thank you very much. Very informative, once again, and very thoughtful speech about Asian American Month and the contributions of immigrants, as well as American citizens, who may not all look like everybody. So I appreciate very much your comments, particularly about how many American citizens were interred during World War II, and it's something for us to think about. Mr. Swan, thank you. That is something the Board will consider appropriately, and thank you for the information about the status of that case. And finally, Ms. Kranek, thank you for starting a healthy competition among us Commissioners that I assure you will just get...
It was all fair.
It will just get fiercer and dirtier as we move on, so...
I'll be back to defend this title again.
It's astonishing that there was like 37 people named Quinn who participated in the race. Seemed to be a little much. So, next, our next agenda item is Bureau of Fire update. Mr. McCollum? No. Mr. Gondik, apologize.
I have for Township Bureau of Fire report for April 2024. We had a total incidence of number at 77, 54 township incidents, 23 out-of-tauntship mutual aid incidents. The average personnel per call was 15. We had 978 personnel hours committed to incidents, 998 personnel hours committed to training, and the Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to four working fires within Delaware County in April. That is the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Next item on our agenda is the Township Auditor update. Mr. Anderson. This is why everybody stayed.
Everybody else is missing out. First off, congratulations to all those officers who were recognized tonight. Also, congratulations to welcome Jamie to your new position. And also want to mention Philly's own first somehow. I also have to report a gift to a Commissioner. I went to a bar brewery in Philadelphia, Two Locals Brewing, and they had a beer called Seventh Ward. So, of course, I have to buy an extra one and...
I meant to thank you. That was a really good beer.
It is. It's an excellent beer. And, you know, that beer had a value of about $4.25, but the look on Connor's face when I gave it to him was priceless. I'm working on the other wards. I'll talk to the owners, see if they can make more for everybody else. But, all right, so I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next item on our agenda is the Township Manager update. How can Township Manager Cuthbertson please?
I do have a couple announcements on behalf of myself and Township Manager Dave Berman. Reminder to the public that the scadium will be closed as the planned shutdown that we've been advertising. It will be closed starting Wednesday, May 15. We are replacing the chiller, and while I don't understand all the ins and outs of what makes a chiller a chiller, it's what makes the ice cold, which we are famous for our ice quality. So we are planning that for replacement, and the construction managers have told us to plan around July 22 for reopening, so just to remind the public about that. Also, on May 18, Manoa Road will be closed as the bridge will be delivered for Pennsy Trail. That will also involve a shutdown by PICO from approximately the morning hours, maybe a nine-to-two thing. Affected residents should have been notified by PICO by now. That is the 18th. A reminder that on the initial trash collection calendar, the one out at the beginning of the year, we had erroneously had the primary as this week. We had since sent out corrected postcards to the Tuesday/Thursday group, of which I am one, but trash is as scheduled tomorrow on Tuesday. So please, everybody in the Tuesday/Thursday group, put your trash out for tomorrow. There is a PICO gas replacement project that's also starting shortly. It'll be on West Chester Pike, spanning from Glengarry up to Eagle, so we can all have fun with that pretty much all summer, from 9 to 3, Monday through Friday. And we have the reminder that our ever-popular e-waste event will be June 15. We get lots of calls. It's amazing. The community really appreciates this event. So it is June 15. It is pre-registration only, and pre-registration will open up on May 15 on our website. There's a link to a sign-up genius. For those who aren't comfortable with the computer or just want a little personalized help, they can call the Township Building and ask for Alexis DeSanti, and she'd be happy to manually register you for the event. Go ahead.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the rate for regular minutes of April 8.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, additions, or deletions? Hearing none. Manager Cuthbertson?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is approval of warrants.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number 5, 2024, totaling $6,491,263.33. General and sewer fund payroll for April 11, 2024, in the amount of $733,938.63. General and sewer fund payroll for April 25, 2024, in the amount of $928,185.73. General and sewer fund payroll from May 9, 2024, in the amount of $743,263.34. General fund disbursements, number 5, 2024, in the amount of $1,609,352.88. Sewer fund disbursements, number 5, 2024, in the amount of $184,103.39. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 5, 2024, in the amount of $83,165.66. Capital projects funds disbursement, number 5, 2024, in the amount of $1,967,231.14. American Rescue Plan Fund, number 5, 2024, in the amount of $220,348.81. Credit card statement ending April 27, 2024, in the amount of $21,673.21.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Just in our Township Auditor, has had all his answers, all his questions answered, so Manager Cuthbertson, will you take the role?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next item on our agenda is, looks like, three tax assessment appeals, and we will consider them one at a time.
Motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 24 West Turnbull Avenue, DC Folio 220302106-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas, Delaware County, number 2023-010290, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the Board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Township Manager Cuthbertson, will you?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next motion?
Motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 56 East Clearfield Road, DC Folio 220300484-00, pending in the court of common pleas of Delaware County, number 2023010775, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of counsel in the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at 100 Washington Avenue, DC Folio 22-010230100, pending in the court of common pleas of Delaware County, number 2020-009278, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
No.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We have two ordinances for consideration tonight, Ordinance P. 6 of 2024.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P. 6 2024, amending Chapter 4, Administration of Government, to provide for the criteria and process for the naming of township property and establishing a township property naming committee.
Second. Second.
We have a motion in a second. This is a second reading. Any questions or comments or additions or deletions? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Before we move on, I do want to thank my colleagues who worked very hard on this ordinance. Its second reading is tonight. It is now effective, and I think it will be very effective for us and for future boards. So thank you all. The next ordinance for our consideration, Ordinance P. 7 of 2024.
Motion to adopt the first reading of Ordinance P. 7 or 2024 while authorizing traffic restrictions on the following high or high highway, special purpose parking in front of 19 Creek Avenue in front of 66 Brookline Boulevard. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times from Brookline South Side from the southwest corner of Alston Road to a point approximately 50 feet west of, and no parking here to what, the corner?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none. Madam Manager?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next for our consideration, we have three resolutions to consider tonight. The first resolution for our consideration, Number 2376 of 2024.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to motion to adopt Resolution Number 2376 2024, that the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township hereby approves the use of funds from the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the above referenced project and initiatives. Crescent Hill Francis Drive sanitary sewer lining in the amount of $67,410, and replacement of the Leachate Trench at for the amount of $43,520.
Second.
We have a resolution in a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next consideration for our next consideration is Resolution Number 2377 of 2024. This is the Delaware County Council, 2024 Allocation of County Liquid Fuel Tax Funds.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2377, 2024 Authorizing Application to Delaware County Council for a 2024 allocation of county liquid fuel tax funds in the amount of $53,568 for 2024 streetlight operating expenditures.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, we have Resolution Number 2378 of 2024. This is the use of ARPA funds for parks and recreation.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2378 2024, that the Board of Commissioners of Havreford Township hereby approves the use of funds from the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the following project. Park pavilion roof replacements and repairs at various parks in an amount not to exceed $49,000. Park pavilion roof replacement and repair at Westgate Hills Park for a total of $9,650. Purchase and install playground rubber surface at Merry Place for a total of $65,244. We place six picnic tables at various parks in the amount of $4,517. Install three in-ground grills at large parks in the amount of $1,642.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? I'm sorry, we have a resolution. Oh, no, we have a motion to adopt a resolution. So any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next items on our agenda, the number of contract awards that we will be awarding. So first one is for the scadium. Mr. Gondak?
Motion to award contract for electrical services related to the condenser water pump replacement at the scadium to Shipsey Electric, Inc., in the amount of $19,852.50, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next contract for our consideration is from the Public Works Department relating to the 2024 road program.
Mr. President, motion to award the 2024 road program to N. Abonatio Contractors in the amount of $882,827.5, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Also, within Public Works Department, we have a contract for consideration for the Crescent Hill Francis Drive sanity, I'm sorry, sanitary sewer lining.
Motion to award the Crescent Hill Francis Drive sanitary sewer line contract to Insetiform Technologies in the amount of $67,410, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our final contract for consideration this evening involves the replacement of the Leachate Collection Trench.
Motion to replace the Leachate Collection Trench at, to Delaware Environmental Construction Services in the amount of $43,520, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We now move to purchases. There are a number of purchases for us to do this evening. First, purchase would be for, within our Public Works Department, a camera system upgrades for sanitation trucks.
Mr. President, a motion to enter into a purchase agreement for the upgrade of rear and forward-facing cameras on all 10 township sanitation trucks from Sourcewell under CoStar's contract number 020221-GEO in the amount of $21,240.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments about this purchase?
Could someone please explain why we need these cameras to be upgraded for the township?
Sure. This will be on all of the sanitation trucks. It will provide camera angles from 360 degrees around the entire truck. It's for everybody's protection, really, employees' protection, a protection from liability of damage to property, both our property and the public's property. It has the ability to record also in case we ever have to refer back to answer any questions. And as I said, this will outfit every truck in the sanitation fleet with a 360 camera. So we feel this is a wise decision.
Just one more follow-up question. Would these cameras be turned on automatically when the sanitation trucks leave the public works yard, or would they have a manual switch inside the cap of the truck?
I am not 100% sure of that. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up question. I was thinking about this after we talked about it last week. These, do these cameras also do sound or just video?
No, I believe they do sound as well.
They do sound as well. Do we have any obligation to, I mean, obviously, our Public Works employees are informed that they're being recorded audio-wise. Do we have any obligation to put any kind of signage or notice to the public that that's happening if you happen to be within proximity of one of those trucks?
That has not come up in our staff discussion, but I'll defer to Solicitor Waco if you have anything to add.
I'm assuming that the trucks will be at all public places and public roads, so I don't believe that's a requirement under the Wire Type Act to have that, whether or not there wants to be notice, provided that's something that would be optional to a township.
But there's no, so you're understanding there's no requirement, though?
It wouldn't be a requirement, assuming that the trucks are in public places when the sound is off.
It's also worth noting, while we're discussing cameras in our sanitation trucks, our trucks are also equipped with data collection material that helps our township manager evaluate the speed with which our trucks are traveling. We do get complaints from people every once in a while about, they feel like trash trucks are going too fast to their neighborhood. These are things that can be immediately analyzed and evaluated and addressed necessary by our Public Works Director and by our township manager. So in addition to the cameras, there are other data collection materials that are used by the township, employed by the township to, again, for the benefit of our citizens as well as for the benefit of and protection of our employees. So that said, unless anybody else has anything they'd like to discuss on this issue, we could call the vote.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next, our next contract is within our Emergency Medical Services Department, a graphics package for ambulance.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of setup production and installation of graphics on F-450 ambulance 108B from Chariot Graphics, Bridgeport, PA, in the amount of $12,340.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstiegrub.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next contract for consideration involves the Community Recreation and Environmental Center, the electric charging station.[1615.01]
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase and installation of one dual-port, port, charge point CPF-50 electric charging station and one dual-port CT-4021 electric charging station from National Energy Solutions Incorporated, Fallsington, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $18,853.80 for the township's Community Recreation and Environmental Center located at 9,000 Parkview Drive, Haverford, PA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Township Manager, you have a comment?
Would you like to take the role on this, a comment on the last item, the sanitation trucks? There were a couple of questions that, through the power of technology, I was able to get answers on.
Oh, okay. All right. My apologies. I didn't hear you correctly. Do any of my colleagues have any questions about the crack electric charging station?
I do, Larry.
Yes.
Will there be a fee for users?
On the public side, yes, there will. And they'll be mirrored, the same fee structure that we have for here, in accordance with the fee schedule.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Manager Cuthbertson.
Yes, I did just want to alert the board, as I said, through the power of technology and our Public Works Director, who is watching from, listening and catching text messages, the cameras do come on automatically, Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb, I think that was your question. And they do record sound. And there's also a sticker on the side door saying that the, the truck and its activity are being recorded.
Thank you.
So beyond notice out there, anybody hurling any expletives at our hard-working sanitation folks, you are on candid camera. The next contract for us to consider is for Parks from Recreation Department, Murray Place Playground Rubber Surface.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the purchase of playground rubber surface from Recreation Resource USA in the amount of $65,244.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this contract? I'm sorry, on this purchase? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next purchase for our consideration is change orders within our library renovation project.
Mr. President, a motion to approve change order in the amount of $64,050.70 with Rycon Construction, the general contractor for the library renovation and expansion project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this particular change order?
I think it is just important to reiterate, for anybody that didn't watch our work session last week, that we did have a general contractor and members of our team that are overseeing the construction project talk about where they were and that they're in line with what the contingency budget was and that they're going to be out of the ground, hopefully, by the time we're speaking now. So they're, they're very confident that what was budgeted under contingency fee for change orders will be sufficient.
Thank you for that clarification.
Questions to look at the work session last week?
Mr. Holmes, I'd like to add some more details about the, some of the change orders that were requested. When the library plans were put in place, there were a number of things. They were hoping they would be able to reuse to reduce the cost. But in the process of doing the construction, it was discovered that some of these items were not, had to be replaced because they were old or deteriorating. For example, there was an existing column in the lower level that was called on to remain, and it cannot be salvaged and has to be replaced. Or, for example, there was an existing plaster block wall between meeting room 226 on the second floor and the living room below. It was discovered that the existing wall was indeed not plum and in very poor condition, and that had to be replaced. We were, the library was also hoping to reuse the existing bookshelves, but it turns out it was not possible to reuse that. So there were a number of things that the construction plans were trying to be very economical, but since it's a very old set of buildings, unexpected problems arose that are being addressed in the most responsible way possible.
Well, we certainly don't want to pour new wine into old skins, so I'm pleased that they are evaluating these assets and making changes and upgrades and replacements where necessary. And unless anybody else has any comments, we will consider this, this order.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our next, also within our library renovation project, will be another change order with Dolan Mechanical.
Mr. President, a motion to approve a change order in the amount of $13,619.50 with Dolan Mechanical, the plumbing contractor for the library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? I assume all of these were what was discussed last week and that this, all these change orders remain within our, our contingent, contingency that we added into the contract. Is that right?
That is correct. I would add that this plumbing change was required because when they were excavating the old bank building basement for the new office, an old oil storage tank was discovered. So they're installing a exhaust system to get those, you know, get, get all of that stuff exhausted outside of the building. So they're requiring to run piping. And then eventually, they will remove that old oil tank later.
Thank you for that information. Any other questions or comments on this particular purchase? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Finally, one last change order with our library renovation.
Mr. President, a motion to approve change order in the amount of $9,750 with AJM Electric, the electrical contractor for the library renovation and expansion project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this particular change order?
I think the public will like this particular change order because it allows for many more additional data jacks and power outlets throughout the building. So people can plug in and use all their resources to be continuing to grow, enhance, and enrich their lives, according to the library mission statement.
Very pleased to hear that. Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb, any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey. Commissioner Cavender. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Next item on our agenda are appointments that still remain to be filled this year. The first one for consideration is Historical Commission.
Mr. President.
Yes.
A motion made to appoint Tony Aceto to serve on the historical, to fill the unexpired four-year term on the Historical Commission to expire December 31, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any other motions for this position? We have a motion to close. Do we have a second? We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations? Any opposed? Guys have it. Nominations are closed. Before us is the consideration of Mr. Aceto for the Historical Commission to expire an unexpired four-year term, which will expire at the end of December 2025. Question is a yes or no on Mr. Aceto?
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, to Mr. Aceto. And thank you for volunteering. Our next, next appointment for our consideration is a spot, a vacancy on the Vacant Property Review Committee.
Motion made to appoint Brendan Dockerty to the Vacant Property Review Committee for a five-year term to expire December 31, 2028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Vacant Property Review Committee. Do we have any other nominations for this position?
Motion to close.
Second.
So we have a motion to close and a second. All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Guys have it. Nominations are closed. For consideration now is Dockerty. For our consideration is a motion to appoint Brendan Dockerty to the Vacant Property Review Committee for a five-year term set to expire at the end of 2028.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, it was true. Thank you. The Environmental Advisory Committee, I understand we have an appointment to that?
Yeah, William Hitchcock for the third ward representative.
Thank you, Commissioner McCluskey. In the sixth ward, we will be, I will be appointing Teresa Walter to the Senior Citizens Advisory Council.
Thank you, Larry.
And that is all. Thank you all. That concludes our appointments. The next item on our agenda is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. For anyone who would like to speak on any topic, I would say a non-agenda item, but if you feel moved, you could certainly get up and speak about an agenda item. Is there anybody on the left-hand side at the front of the room would like to speak? Second, third? Yes, sir. For the record, I was referring to the gentleman next to you, and he wasn't referring to you as sir.
Oh, no. And I don't identify as such either, so don't worry.
Welcome back, ma'am.
Miss.
Adam.
Yeah, my name's Dory Dally. I live in Haverford Township. I'd like to speak about two topics this evening. One was something that happened last Thursday. I was expecting to go to the, I wanted to go to the Planning Commission meeting. In the morning of the meeting, I looked up to see if the agenda was there, and it wasn't up. It got a 404 message. And typically, I check that before I decide I want to go to a meeting. So I sent out an email to Mr. Berman, his administrative assistant, Commissioner Holmes, and Solicitor Walco, letting them know that this issue had happened. And I have a copy of it here. If I can just have you guys pass it out that I sent an email, and I got a 404 error, as they're saying the agenda wasn't there. This is just a type of thing, the Sunshine Act, it says that requirements for agencies to post the agenda for all public meetings at least 24 hours in advance. So the, so I guess my question is to everyone is, what does no reply to my email mean? I didn't get anything back? Did you not get it? So now that you do have it, I'd like to just ask what's going to happen as a result of that? And what does it mean, you know, not getting a reply? I sent it last Thursday afternoon, didn't get anything Friday or today. So I'm a little disappointed, to be honest with you, that I didn't get anything back. So, you know, I mean, I guess if you want to wait, I have a second topic. Go ahead, Larry, sorry.
No, I, I will address that after your second topic.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I should've said Commissioner Holmes, unless I'm more personal.
That's right, I called you sir, so I think between us, yeah. I think we're both equally opposed.
You're my commissioner, so I have a familial basis maybe with you guys. So, second topic I'd like to bring up is, I guess I'd like your efforts to safeguard our taxpayer money for each project that is initiated. It was your own money. I'd like your role as our public servants to be more fiduciary in nature, rather than what appears sometimes to be loosely spent, that we don't have. Grants that do get offered are really not, to me, I don't know, maybe you can explain it differently. I'm not a grant requestor or receiver. But ultimately, they are taxpayer monies that are coming, you know, from us in one way or another that we're paying for initiatives. The reason why I bring this up is regarding the spending of our taxpayer dollars, it appears that there have been solutions that are in need of problems for. Take, for example, the Safe Streets for Us, which seems to be an example of this. And I'm not against having safe streets. So just, it's just more of a situation where we did have the kickoff meeting, Mr. Berman, I wish he was here, but he kicked off the Safe Streets for Us virtual meeting on March 7th, stating, and I'm quoting, "One of the biggest concerns or complaints, just our worries as a community, are safe streets." And we talk about for traveling, "safe streets for pedestrians, safe streets for bicyclists, and safe streets for motorists," unquote. So where did this biggest concern get documented when the residents of our community, almost 500, no, 3,500, more than 3,500 residents, took this survey for the comprehensive plan that was done between 2020 and 2021? There were, the question that was posed are, was, and I have the, it's from the PowerPoint slide that was given by Torley Schmely from Urban Research and Development, "What are the most important issues facing the township over the next 10 to 15 years?" In this list of eight things, I don't see anything about safety on our streets as the biggest concern. The first one was reducing traffic congestion. I don't know if Safe Streets for All is addressing that. That's something that still is a problem. Two was reducing energy consumption and promoting environmental sustainability. Not really related, but I'm just reading the first three. The third thing is addressing flooding and stormwater problems. So I just wanted to bring that up to ask, you know, let, these, these things are listed, but yet I feel as though this Safe Streets for All, I know it's a federal thing, we're going to get a grant when we get the plan done and everything, but I feel as though it's not an inexpensive initiative. And I'm not sure where these other issues that were stated by residents back in, you know, 2020, 2021 are being addressed. So I, I don't really, I'm not a fan of finding, having planned solutions and seeking for problems. That's what I feel like was going on. So I just wanted to express my concerns about that.
Well, thank you for those concerns. I think we addressed all eight of them, and so now we're on nine, which I think is the safe streets. In all seriousness, safe streets are an issue for every one of us, is what we hear from, from our constituents. And while I'm not speaking scientifically, I would say that the survey, when done, about the comprehensive plan was announced as a survey about a comprehensive plan, and I think people may have taken advantage of that opportunity to think more about the township in terms of planning and its future, as opposed to raising like immediate, you know, more basic concerns about safety or about streets. I can tell you that in 19 years, and all the constituent meetings I've had, that the first thing people want to talk about is, is traffic and pedestrian safety, you know, when I, when I, when I have meetings at Chestnut Walt. And I know that a lot of our colleagues experience the same thing. So I think those things can coexist, that we have eight identified things in a, in a, in data we collected to analyze a comprehensive plan and still have, still with a straight face, announce to the public that safe streets is something very important, folks. If, if there was a little hyperbole to make it the most important, as opposed to in the top three, I forgive my colleagues for doing that. I appreciate your, your point and your comments about preserving our, being stewards of our citizens' funds. We don't willy-nilly apply for grants and get whatever money we can and then try to find something to spend it on. It often is an initiative from, from citizens that we are responding to, where we seek grants. In fact, we say to folks, one of the best ways for us to address problems that are raised to us is first find out if we can find out funds that are already out there, already available to folks, as opposed to having to take it out of our own coffers. But I'm constantly aware of, and I think all of my colleagues are, that all taxpayer, that all funds from whatever government source they come, come from us, come from individual taxpayers, if not here in Haverford, somewhere else. And then we're making contributions that end up somewhere else as well. So I do appreciate those comments and just assure you that we aren't just looking for problems to fix. We all sincerely believe each time we embark on one of these studies that it is to try to make things in the township better. So I appreciate that. On your first comment.
Yeah, thank you.
I did not respond to you. I admit that. And I may have seen email traffic that I mistakenly believed was a response to you. So I personally take responsibility as the president and apologize for not having responded to you. I do believe that our township manager and township solicitor analyzed the issue and determined that the 404 message that you had gotten was temporary and that things were eventually back up. You can, I assume that you eventually were able to see the agenda.
Yeah, it was eventually in the afternoon, but I guess there's a 24-hour thing.
Yeah.
Not to be a nitpicker, but I mean, you know, that's the Sunshine Act.
And that you brought it to our attention may very well have, have cured it faster than it might have happened if you hadn't. So I appreciate that. And again, I apologize that I didn't personally respond to you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for letting me comment.
Certainly. Anybody else on the left-hand side? Yes, of course. Sir, I'm up. No offense, but no.
My name's Michael Lee. I'm a Haverford Township resident. I wanted to talk about Safe Streets for All also. I think there's about 50,000 township residents, and I think there were less than 100 on the kickoff webinar, web meeting. And there were about 750 responses to the online survey. They said at the meeting just last week that, or that there were averaging 10 people at each focus group meeting. And there were maybe about 50 people at the meeting at the crack last week. So it was a pretty small amount of the Haverford Township residents were involved with Safe Streets for All. Then I personally had a problem with it because poster board for Board One was on the floor in the corner with no interventions. And all the other ones were eye level. And the reason for that is that we were the first board to go. And in the March 7th webinar meeting that we had, you had to fill out a survey and click a box saying you wanted to be emailed about it. And 12 of our residents did, but nobody got an email notice. And the decision was made to not have, not redo it. And we, I got a phone call and another man did. There were two Board One residents there at 4:00 PM for a 6:00 PM meeting. So that was difficult. Then there were other changes made. I think they were made at the March 11 meeting by Township Manager Berman. He opened up to everybody. He opened up to everybody and I think two commissioners attended two ward meetings that were not supposed to, according to that initial kickoff meeting. And then the other thing was, I talked to Olivia at the thing that the digital electronic billboards were considered off limits for Safe Streets for All. And that to me doesn't make any sense because they're distractions, they're major areas of the township. And so I don't know why they were considered off limits for this thing, but that's what Olivia said. And certain things like state roads were off limits too. And then there were studies from all over the place, from like London and, and other countries about supporting the interventions that we were recommending for Safe Streets for All. And I'm not sure how much they pertain to Haverford Township. And then, so I am looking forward to seeing the draft report when it comes out. I was disappointed about the Ward 1 participation, really disappointed that digital electronic billboards were not addressed when they're such a major issue on our roads, either on Lancaster Avenue or Westchester Pike, two places on Westchester Pike. And I, anyway, so I'm looking forward to the draft report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on, oh, well, actually, before you get up, I'm going to have to come back to you. Sir, in the back, did you want to speak on? You're okay. Come on up.
Michelle Albrecht. Just on that Safe Street meeting, I was there last week and I'd just like to say that it was a very confusing meeting. And the Parks Department held different community public forums like that with both our Brookline Park and our Prose Plan. And when the consultants presented what we were supposed to do with these ward maps, it contradicted what was written on the ward map. So the ward map said, put your star, your circle where you feel there's a safe street statue. And that wasn't what they wanted. They wanted to vote on the alternative remedies, which weren't well explained at the meeting. But then they were going around peeling the stickers off for where people had put them, where the intersections were. It was extremely confusing and I don't feel that that's a good data set to be working with going forward. I really think they need to do a better job to be able to have clearer instructions so that the people who were there could put their stars or their circles at an appropriate place. It was just very confusing. It was, and people were very frustrated because they watched the consultants peeling the stickers off.
I do have an update from our Township Director that initial recommendations will now be reworked based on feedback from the May 7th meeting and will be shared with the public when completed. Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Berman and I had a conversation since he was going to miss this meeting. Just to reiterate that the May 7th discussions that went on, I was not there personally, so I can't speak for myself, but that there was a lot of feedback as to the initial recommendations. And I think the consensus was that they did need to be reworked. So then Olivia with CH Planning was going to take them back to her team, rework them, and then re-present them to the public for additional feedback.
Yes.
Are we going to redo the Ward 1 meeting? No interventions? Two people should have done it the way the other board has done, 15 or 20.
So. I don't know the answer to that question, but I will take it up with our Township Manager when he returns. I suspect that Township Manager Cuthbertson doesn't know the answer.
I remember, Mr. Lee, I think you, you brought that to my attention one day when Mr. Berman was not, was not in.
I sent an email to Mr. Berman.
Oh, I see.
Talking to Mr. President Holmes about it.
Okay.
ICC.
Yeah. I do remember your situation. I have not heard of any plans to re-advertise and hold another Ward 1 meeting, but I was not part of those subsequent emails and discussions, so I'll defer to Mr. Berman when he gets back.
Commissioner Holmes, I don't want to put words in Mr. Berman's mouth because he's not here, but my, my understanding was is that after the, the problems that occurred at the first ward meeting, that, that rather than give the first ward another meeting, that they, the first ward was just invited to participate in some of the other ward meetings, which some people from the first ward weren't, weren't thrilled about that solution. But my understanding is that as of today at least, there's not been any rescheduled meeting for first ward.
And I just wanted to go to the sixth ward meeting. And when I got there, people were complaining that, and that had changed. Residents were like, and then when I got there, I was not able, we were looking at the six word map. We talked a lot about the Haverford issue. But you did not talk to anyone. I don't know. I just think.
Mr. Lee, anyone of us will be, will be available up here after the meeting to discuss this further? Yeah, certainly. And thank you for your comments. I do, I do need to move on, but I'm not dismissing you. I invite you to come up and speak afterwards. Is there anybody else on the left-hand side of the room who would like to speak on any topic? On the right-hand side of the room? Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is new business. Do any of my colleagues have any new business to bring before the board right now? Hearing none, we now move to other business. I will begin with Commissioner Gondik.
Thank you. Just to make a couple of announcements. The first is that the Westgate Hills Civic Association, unfortunately their Mayfest got rained out and so it's been continued to June 1st. Let me make sure I have the right time here. It looks like it's Saturday, June 1st at the Park, starts at 5:00 PM. It's their, their May Fair, Mayfest and Movie in the Park Night. Again, I do encourage people to go to it. It's a great event. Hopefully the weather will cooperate this time and everyone can come out for live music, games, some snacks and enjoy a nice movie in the park. Want to wish Happy Belated Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. You know, obviously without you, none of us would be here. A special thanks also to the Police Department. Obviously, we heard about all of, you know, the heroic, you know, and intense activities that they participate in on, some of the heroic and intense activities they participate in on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis. So I do want to give a special thank you to them, you know, as we come into Police Week and so on. About a week or so ago, myself and a few of my colleagues had the pleasure of going over to the Mennoa Fire Company to meet with their chief and take a little tour of the property. I've been there several times, but I find that every time I go there, I learn a little something new. And so it was, I'd just like to express a thanks to Mennoa for inviting us out and giving us a little tour and explaining, you know, what's going on with the new truck that we just purchased and was delivered and some of the new equipment. And in that regard, I want to give a reminder that it's never too late to support your local fire companies. All five of our fire companies are volunteer companies and they run a dues drive every year. And it's never too late to contribute. I'm pretty sure all of them, if you don't have the letter that they send out every year, I'm pretty sure all of them have the ability to donate via their website. So I do encourage you to, you know, help them, support, support them so they can support us. And then that's about it. I'll just reiterate, the skadium is closing for renovations on May 15th through July 22nd. As far as that goes, you know, obviously just a reminder in case, you know, as we get into the warm weather, you want to go ice skating, just check the schedule and make sure that they're actually open before you head on over. Other than that, have a, have a good May and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Commissioner Forstiegrup.
Thank you very much. I'd like to extend another reminder that on Saturday, May 18th, Mennoa Road will be closed from approximately 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the placement of the pedestrian bridge over Mennoa Road that will link the two sides of Penzi Trail. So I hope everyone plans accordingly. It'll be an exciting operation to see that bridge be put into place. Also coming up this week, but a little bit earlier, Wednesday, May 15th, there is in-person at the crack, the annual association meeting of the Haverford Township Free Library. This, this will, the association meeting will give an update about the progress on the library construction project. And after that meeting, there will be the regular monthly board meeting that will take place immediately afterward. Everyone is invited to attend. So that again is this Wednesday, May 15th, in-person at the Haverford Reserve Crack. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstiegrup. Commissioner McCloskey.
First, thank you to all the officers that were here tonight and to the chief for putting on the ceremony again. And it's, it's nice that we're able to participate in that each year and serve as a venue for an important acknowledgement of the work that our officers do. So thank you to everybody in the department. Did want to make the public aware, if you are in town on Memorial Day, we have a ceremony outside here, the Township Building. It's May 27th this year. The ceremony here is 11:00 AM. It's usually a reflective ceremony and I think one that typically the high school band is in. And we usually have a speaker and there's remembrance of those that we've lost. So if you are in town, I encourage you, it's a, it's a nice way to start your Memorial Day and sort of center yourself. In the third ward, the Oakmont Fire Company also has a small ceremony at 10:00 AM. And the American Legion at Grassland Park has a ceremony at 1:00, followed by a picnic that the Boy Scouts prepare burgers and hot dogs afterwards. So plenty to do if you are in town that day. And that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Commissioner McCloskey, thank you. Commissioner Kavner.
Thank you. Just one quick announcement, this Sunday on May 19th, from 2:00 to 6:00, Cooper Town Elementary is going to host its annual Highland Fling. That's open to everybody in the community. It's the PTO's major fundraiser for Cooper Town, food, fun and games fellowship for the whole community, and I hope to see some of you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavner.
Commissioner Holmes, can I jump in real quick? I unfortunately.
Jump back in?
Yes. Get in real quick. I apologize, I had a mental blank and flubbed my months. The first ward is also going to be having a community meeting in conjunction with the fourth ward, which I'm sure Commissioner Trumbada will talk about also. But the, the commission, first ward, fourth ward community meeting will be held Monday, May 20th at 7:00 PM. This will be at the Linwood Elementary Cafeteria. So it is somewhat different than some of my commission meetings from the past. So just wanted to kind of highlight that, that change of location, that it's going to be at the Linwood Elementary Cafeteria starting at 7:00 PM.
And since people are jumping in, I just wanted to add that Chestnut Wald, the Chestnut Wald Chase is this Sunday at 8:30.
So at the risk of alienating the right, is there anybody else here on the left who wants to jump back in and say anything?
Chestnut Wald Chase, supporting Chestnut, Chestnut Wald Elementary School. There'll definitely be more third ward residents there than the seventh ward at that race.
I just thought of something.
Good bet. Hop in. Sorry. Never get out of here.
There's the Maniac McGee Run at Chatham Park this Saturday. It'll go right past my house, which is always a lovely thing.
Anybody else on the left want to say something they forgot? Try to remember what month it is or some sport or something? Okay, I'm now going to go to the right. Okay.
Hello.
Commissioner Quinn. Yes, the floor is yours for now.
Well, thanks, thank, thank you, Larry. And thanks, 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 thank you to everybody who's already said all the things that I don't have, have to say. So thank you to that. And I was honored to present the ALS Aware, Awareness Month thing tonight, as you know, that is near, near and dear to me. So I was honored to BS by, by the board to, 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 to re, 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 re that. And to the police, it's always great, like every May, when we honor them and we see all the stuff that our police do for our community. And I think that's the best and I think it's, thanks to the leadership here too. It's always known, every time that anybody comes to speak here, they always talk about our police and how they're, 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 they're the best. So I always enjoy to hear, hear that. And also this week is, I don't know, Awareness Week. And as you know, for the past five years, I've sat, sat on, like on this board. It is no secret that I, that I have that. And six years ago, if you ever told, told, told me that I'd be sitting before a board and before a group to speak, I would be scared and I would be out, out that door as fast, fast as I can. But I'm honored to sit, or to sit up here and honored to represent this town, town, township and to, to, like everybody always lets my voice be heard, even if it takes long. And I want to thank everybody on, on this board and the whole staff for all that too. So thank, thank, thank you all.
You're most welcome, Commissioner Quinn. And if you started talking now and didn't stop for three years, you still wouldn't talk as much as I've bored these people to tears. So.
Check it out.
Everyone welcomes your participation, your active involvement and more than anything, your significant dedication to the people of this township even before you ran. So thank you for those comments and thank you for continuing to be here. Commissioner Hart.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in last week's Ann's Purple for a Purpose Race Walk at the Reserve. We had more than 200 participants, including a number of commissioners, as well as Ex-Commissioner Wexler. The final totals for what we raised aren't in yet, but we're hopeful that we increase the amount that we raised from last year for pancreatic cancer research. And I'll just reiterate that the Maniac McGee, the 26th Annual Maniac McGee Race will be held at Chatham Park Saturday morning at 9:00. It's also a day of a, a festival at Chatham Park. It's a fundraiser for them. It's a great event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum.
You deserve the right to come back in.
Yeah, hop in anytime. Yeah.
Couple of quick.
Everybody here on the right can just jump in anytime they want.
Couple of quick community announcements. Former Commissioner of the Ninth Ward, Jack McDonald and Carol McDonald, they have a JDM Foundation and they're about to have their 21st annual golf outing. The proceeds from that go to various groups, youth groups and families in the Haverford Township. So it's a, it's a worthwhile event. Anyone looking for information on that can visit www.jdmfoundation.org. The next thing I have is the Hilltop Civic Association is still looking for volunteers to help staff and man their boards. Right now they're kind of defunct, so they're trying to get that back up and running. Anybody that's interested in helping with that can contact me personally. My information was at the Township website. And then the last thing I have is I'm trying to build an email list to improve the communication between the residents and my ward. Again, my information is on the Township website. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. Commissioner Trumbada.
Thank you, Mr. President. So residents in Haverford Township's third and fourth wards may have received a postcard regarding redistricting and re-importionment in our township. As mentioned in last month's Commissioner meeting by Commissioner Forstiegrup, we're indeed undergoing a redistricting process. So to facilitate this, we've engaged CH Planning as an outside consultant who has presented us with a report outlining three possible recommendations. Unfortunately, all options entail some of fourth, some fourth ward residents being redistricted to the third ward. And we're currently seeking feedback on these options until May 31st. So please visit the Township's dedicated webpage where you'll find information, maps and a survey to provide your input. On another note, you might recall that the Township received a USDA grant, which among other outcomes, offers an incentive to residents to try out curbside composting for free. And we've expanded it to four months. So if interested, you simply can contact your preferred curbside composting company that's participating in the Township's program to sign up. My household just recently took advantage of this and it's really a great opportunity. And so I encourage others, including my colleagues, to do the same. Additionally, I'd like to invite everyone to discover Haverford's Third Friday Event kicking off this Friday, May 17th on Brookline Boulevard. Promises to be an enjoyable evening, which residents can enjoy entertainment and great deals at our local establishments on Brookline Boulevard. And lastly, I'll just reiterate that I'm pleased to be working And lastly, I'll just reiterate that I'm pleased to be working with Commissioner Gondik, and we'll be holding a joint town hall for residents in the first and fourth wards on Monday, May 20th, 7:00 PM at Linwood Elementary School. The presence of our residents is really invaluable, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Trumbetta. I do, there was an announcement I wanted to make earlier in the meeting. I, I will make it now. There has been, there's been a lot of discussion on social media and a lot of questions to us about the status of what I'll call the billboard litigation. What I want to report to the public is that as of right now, the township continues to litigate that case. That case has not been settled, and it is proceeding as we, along the schedule that was, that was created by the court. And so I just, and the township is represented by special counsel in that, who's been counsel for us for over 10 years. We also have the assistance of our solicitor and the active participation of all nine members of the board, and considering evaluating all the different options in that litigation. But I felt it necessary, just that people understood that the position of this township as of right now is that that litigation continues and that it has not, it is not settled. The, Commissioner McCloskey mentioned the Memorial Day event that we hold here at the township. I encourage everybody in the township to come out that day. The high school band does a wonderful job of providing music before, during, and at the end of the event. It is a very solemn event, and an event to be very proud of our community for who comes out. I have traveled the last couple of years over Memorial Day weekend to see friends on an annual trip, and I always cut that trip early, so I have the opportunity to come back on Monday and participate in that event. I encourage everybody to do so. It's just a little time out of the first big holiday in the summer to take a moment to think about and reflect on people who, who gave the ultimate sacrifice for us here in America. So please consider coming out that day. And if you can't, just spend some time that day thinking about folks who aren't with us anymore and what they gave up for us to be there. That, that is all I have. If anything, anybody has anything else, I will entertain it. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm moved. We are adjourned.